Evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, October 24th, 2011. This evening, City Council is meeting in two different committee meetings. One, the Committee of the Whole, then we will be going into Finance and Personnel. Committee of the Whole this evening will be chaired by Member Bang.
Good evening. This evening, we're pleased to have Rotary give us a small presentation on the Southside Park improvements that they've been working on. It's called "All Can Play," I think. What's it called again?
I'm sorry.
Then what's the name of your project again?
Just the Southside Park.
Right.
Playground.
And it's called Play For All or something.
Play For All.
There it is, right there. Let's all play. Okay.
I tried to show YouTube of the park and we're not having success in bringing it up.
Oh, dear.
I guess we'll just go back to the PowerPoint presentation, so.
We have a grant pending on this. We have an in-kind contribution, is that right?
Also, that didn't show, take me second here to...
Well, she's getting set up. Those of you out here who feel the importance of this, and all of us do about this, you can think about contributing some small part, maybe something more than a brace toward this larger undertaking. It's been broken down into small parts, which in this economy is probably the best way to go. So, Rotary.
And representing Rotary is Judy Hess.
And Karen Better just walked in the door.
Hi, Karen.
And Councilmember Bang.
For some people who aren't familiar, the Southside Park is just off the new roundabout, and so part of its accessibility, too, is that there's handicapped access through the tunnel, and it's also just an easy location, but might not be evident to everybody who's in town. But that's what it is, just off the southwest corner of the roundabout.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the Southside Accessible Playground. It's a Rotary-inspired project. As President of Rotary, we're required to have a local project and an international project, and this is a local project. I picked last year as President. Bob Choxell was President Fisher. "Let's All Play" is a logo that was designed by Amy Douglas, and I forget the gentleman's name, Mark Burton. So, they put their ideas together, and this is what we come up with. We love it, and we're selling T-shirts with that on it, so, just future-wise. Play is a critical development for every child. Children with disabilities often don't have the opportunity to play in playgrounds and play with their peers. So, our overall goal is to increase, create a play environment which gives children of all abilities the opportunity to play together. We went to see an accessible playground that I'll show you later on, and they have separated. They have an accessible playground and next to a regular playground, and we wanted to see something that was together. So, basically, the principles of inclusive play is be fair, be included, be smart, be able to have independent play as well as play together, have a safe environment, safe play equipment, get kids active, and also have a comfortable environment. The need is for more playground equipment. We have some nice pieces, and also safer playground equipment, and with the rubber surfacing would also make it safer and accessible. This is actually the playground I was telling you about in Cambridge. Diane McVey and I went to see this particular playground. As you can see, it's, the ramps is kind of similar to ours, as recently I'm showing this. This is a double-wide ramp. We do have a picture of the ramp that you have, and the current piece is, someone tried to make it accessible, but there's like a little step-up before you get to the ramp, and actually, we chose to do double-wide ramps. This is another piece that we purchased. This is the type of swings they used. Ours are going to be just a little bit different. I put this in here because it's called a crow's nest, it has a little turnaround, or a little place where you can scoot up underneath, so wheelchairs can get to it. But the reason I like to show this is that telescope is $800 and some dollars, just to give you an idea sometimes how much playground equipment costs. This is what makes it accessible, this transfer step. If you get out someone out of the wheelchair to be able to sit them on something to turn around and let them go down the slide. These are some jobs we have, something similar to this that we've already ordered that we're going to try to get in. Our goals is to provide accessible playground equipment at the Southside Park so that children of all abilities can play together, improve children's health by providing a fun, creative community playground that will encourage play and exercise, and of course, the rubber surfacing for safety, accessibility, and increased playtime. Once it rains, kids can get right on the rubber surfacing and play. You don't have the mud and, you know, the mulch broken away and things like that. It's also safer if someone would fall, and also more accessible for wheelchairs to be able to get to the playground equipment. This is just a picture. You guys know what it looks like. There's other maybe programs or areas that might not know what it looks like. This is adequate parking. When we, I decided I'd like to do this, I first, I went to meet with Rich and Erin at Parks and Recreation, and we talked about the different playgrounds and where we could do this, and we decided on the Southside Park because of the adequate parking and accessible bathrooms. I hadn't been there for several years, and was real surprised to see how nice the accessible bathrooms are there. It's also, we have access now to the bike path and walking path. This is the current piece you have. Our goal is to add accessible equipment to this. This particular ramp, I tried to show where's, you can see there's a step-up, you can hardly, it would be almost impossible to get a wheelchair up. We're talking about turning this piece around, so it's over to the side, and I'll be moving the other piece over there, but if not, then we're going to grade it so it is accessible. But this is a single, just a single-wide wheelchair, and we're going to go for the double-wide when we do the new piece. This is just the current swings that are there. We divided the project up into four phases. Phase one is completed, except for getting some of the pieces in the equipment, or some of the equipment in the ground, they're here in Athens, ready to put in. We bought two toddler swings, replaced two backhoe diggers, very popular with kids, four picnic tables, a beat drum panel, tilted skyrunner, and two rotators, and that so far is $11,000. This is phase two, which we're hoping to get the Nature Works grant, but we haven't heard from, that should have been voted on today. So, as Rich said, no news is good news so far.
Still running.
If you look at the little drum set, that's the set that's already been ordered. We got an $1,800 grant from High Department of Health, so we went ahead and bought that. You see, the two middle swings are the accessible swings. One's going to be large, and one's two to five, and then it's five to 12. This is the big unit. It is, was $68,000. If we can come up with $43,221, to be exact, we can hopefully get this piece. It's a grant through Game Time, but we have to have the money by November 15th. We do have the commitments, gathering up all the money and getting it together and getting it, it's just the simplest grant that originally I've seen, it's just a one-pager that you fill out and send in. So, we hope to get it. Then the rubber surfaces, what's, you know, baffles everybody, but it's, our estimate right now is $52,000, but we've added space that we wanted to include, but we're also probably not going to use this particular contractor. We hopefully will get some grants, some rubber grants, and do it a little bit cheaper than the $52,000. These are the people that's given so far. The Athens Foundation, and the Athens Foundation with the Bill Malcolm Fund in memory of his son. The Rotary District has given $2,000. Rotary Foundation, Athens Rotary Club, the Blinnis Foundation, Friends of India, High Department of Health, Diles Hearing. We've done equipment sales as our latest fundraiser. We've sold, what we've got to do is put a plaque on a piece of equipment. We've sold actually $9,000 worth, plus Diane's switching hers over to the equipment, so total about $10,000. Other donations and fundraisers, it's $4,276, and that totals $57,601, and if you take out $11,000, we do have enough as far as commitments, but it's getting the checks from the Athens Foundation over to the Athens Rotary Club, so we can write that check. I'm sure we'll make it. What can you do to help? We have T-shirts for sale, as I showed you, $10. Other thing I haven't mentioned yet is, we want to do a very nice entryway on both sides. We will recognize donors. We've just now got the drawings. We need to put together some finances with that, see how much it's going to cost. What we've seen so far, it looks wonderful, it's just, it'll go along with what the university has there, and with the new bridge that was put in. It's just a matter of getting that costed out and then a, I guess, a picture that people can see. So, our goal is to look at that, and then having a brick walkway coming in from the park on both sides, so people can have their names and donations put on those, or the columns, it's going to have columns on it that would have, they're stone, and they would have the faces, would have, where you can put donors, major donors on it. You can buy a piece of playground equipment, hold a fundraiser. We're always looking for new members, especially energetic ones. Of course, we just need to spread the word that we have this, and, you know, we're hoping that we can get more people involved. Rich and I have kind of formed a partnership between the City of Athens and the Athens Rotary Club. We have a club, I mean, a committee that meets once a month. We've divided it up into three subcommittees that meet in between that time, and we put back to the committee. There's just, here's just a list of people who are, not necessarily people, but agencies and stuff who are on that committee. Our responsibilities is we want to help do beautification. You know, we spent one day there doing cleanup, had a good time. Mayor was there. We made him actually work. I feel he's actually working.
That's a first.
So, you know, once the equipment's there, we want it to look nice, so we still want to participate in that and do the fundraising, and we want to have a dedication ceremony that recognizes all the contributors. Kind of like a party's going to be a big one when we get done. So, please help us bring this project to fruition, and I am available for any questions?
Any questions? Comments? Jeff?
I want to say, you know, Southside is such a nice area, and we really appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I'd like to say a couple of things. I really appreciate the cooperation that the city and the Rotary is doing, because in other projects that have been taken on by other groups, there hasn't been as much cooperation and communication, and I think that's really important, because this is going on, you know, public, city land, and I appreciate Rich and you doing all that work upfront, so that it kind of makes it so it's easier down the line when all this equipment goes through, because ultimately, the city will be responsible for it and such. I think that's great. I'd also like to point out for Rich and the mayor is that it's great that the fact that the city has put all the accessibility planning in all the other plans that you guys have done, the Rotary, the roundabout, the, you know, all the other things, the pedestrian walkways, to, that shows forethought and planning, so that things like this can go in and plug in, and that's something that will help people in the future, because the groundwork has been done. So, I'd really like to compliment everybody for working together, and I think this will be a real city pride sort of thing, so I really appreciate it.
We also bought a list with pictures on it of playground equipment, and if anybody's interested, we have a list of who's purchased what, so if anybody's interested, I believe this. We're looking at agencies or individuals.
We'd be happy to.
We don't have the stuff set up and ready, but we'd be happy to get that around.
We can leave it in the office, in the council office, and people can come and look and pick out things they may want to donate for.
Those that aren't on, don't want to come to the third floor, say another option or another...
We can make something around the community center.
That'd be a great idea.
Do you have a Facebook or anything like that?
Yes, we have a Facebook page, and it's, the name of it's "Let's All Play."
Okay.
We actually had a little video that connected to it, but for some reason, you can't get it up on YouTube. You can go on YouTube and see it yourself, and I can send that direct, hit line out to everybody.
That list is on Facebook as well? This particular list?
Is it on yet? I don't know about that. Okay, we'll get it on. They need to contact me.
Karen Better.
Karen Better, like I said today, she's like a little Energizer button, keeps us hopping, but you can laugh at that.
Maybe we can put a, like a poster up in the, with this information in the community center, with some pictures from your, I don't know, the YouTube or something, so that people know where to contact and put it on the website also, so, to get the word out.
And I just want to say, it's been a pleasure working with Rich. Rich started with Aaron, and Rich has gotten very involved in it, and he comes to all of our meetings. When I have a decision to make, I always go to his office. It's probably hard to see in me, but he's been, and as I said, he's been wonderful to work with, with this project.
Great to hear. Karen, do you have something you want to say?
Thank you, yeah. I would like to echo similar comments made by Member Fall, and to, again, applaud Herr and his administration for being inclusive and mindful of the needs of people in our community with disability. Disability can look a lot of different ways. It can be hidden, people can have back problems. It's not always a person in a wheelchair. Disability can come in all different kinds of shapes and sizes. So, again, I applaud the efforts of the administration to be mindful and to work with diverse I do think there's probably still a little bit of devil of details to work out here. I'm not quite sure, with sign ordinances and expectations there, how everything works out regarding those aspects in the park, but again, that's something that can be discussed and looked at later. But I definitely support this effort, and again, applaud the mayor's administration.
Any other kudos?
Just, if I understand, if everything goes, or the checks go in, it should be done in the spring, is that the timeline?
Yes. The equipment will be in December 31st. We have to have the check in the mail by November 15th, and it will be in by December 31st. And if we get enough and don't get the Nature Works grant, we may even have enough, hopefully, to go ahead and purchase the swing set. So, that would purchase all the equipment.
So, does this all, all four phases at this point end?
Except for the rubber surfacing. And another thing I want to point out, there's a lot of kids, grandparents now, who take their kids to the park, but this rubber surfacing, for them to get around and be able to supervise their kids will be a bonus. Always forget to bring that up. And I want to thank Nancy for your contribution already.
So, I, once again, we'd like to thank you for coming and telling us about this good news. We sometimes don't hear the good stuff. Appreciate that. Any other comments before we... Chris?
I'd like to thank Director Rich Campatelli, the Recreation Department, for helping, you know, it's this cooperative kind of work that makes a name for the City of Athens, and it makes a big difference. Teaches all of us about being inclusive and working together. So, I know this has meant some coordination on your part and from your staff members, and will for maintenance in the future, so thanks from all of us.
Future is already, already started to plan, concentrating on some of the other parks.
Good, well, thank you.
And future-wise, it has to be ADA accessible. I think it's February 2010, or 12, that everything, if it's bought, sold, designed, whatever, it has to be made accessible.
Good.
Thank you for having us, I really appreciate it.
Thanks again.
Okay, we're out of here.
Paul, do you have some miscellaneous? Thanks, Judy.
All right, thank you.
Miscellaneous, not really. Miss, oh, some, which disappeared to...
The deck.
Okay, I don't have anything.
And let's move on to Finance and Personnel. Karen, you going to do this? We talked last week about a policy that has been suggested that we adopt regarding debt and fund balance, end-of-the-year balance for the finances of the city. Our auditor Cathy Hatt talked to us before, said that the Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure, had actually written most of this policy, so we asked that Mary Ann come by also. So, do either one of you have something you'd like to add before you have some questions about this?
I'd just like to mention that writing the formal policy was a directed response to our bond process last year, where we called the city recreation bonds and reissued them. And during, because of that process, we needed to have our ratings reviewed, which, you know, you've probably been, people are listening to the news and hearing about, you know, the United States ratings, one of the companies downgraded, or downgrading countries, right? But these ratings determine what kind of interest rate we can request when we sell bonds, which selling the bonds to finance the original recreation center was obviously very important. And one of the issues that came up was our reserve policy, debt reserve policy, and while we had sort of an acting goal, policies, we didn't have a formal policy, and that was one of the things that the treasurer questioned about, and one of the things that while we were, during that whole process, which was fairly lengthy, but at the end, City of Athens basically, we had a lot of respects, because we did fairly stable, we didn't have a lot of things in place, and this was one of the things that we questioned. So, we did research with some other information from other cities, and in the discussion with bond agency that was helping us to represent it from there, and with Moody's, and that's where the written policy originated from, so there was discussion.
No, it is, so, and actually, the language, the idea that actually came to us from your bond people and associated groups?
In the rating process. It became clear that having it in writing was much more desirable and would lend itself towards a more positive rating, which at the time, we were reissuing the bonds and going through the rating process, there weren't, there were a number of cities who were not receiving the same rating that they had, which we did, and I think there were a lot of points in our favor in that, but also having, having at least a draft of the policy at that time, we know, was very helpful.
At this moment, we are rated?
Yes, we still, we had, we were given the same rating that we had, which was a AA2, which is what we had before, and were able to get a reasonably good interest rate when we reissued the bonds.
But the recommendation is that we have this policy before the next rating issue comes along?
Well, in general, it's recommended that all government entities, all municipalities, maintain a reasonable reserve at the end of the year, and it's, it came to the fore during that process, I guess is the best way to describe it.
Auditor Hatt, could you have something?
Yeah, I think that was a pretty good explanation. We have already talked about this. Everyone has a copy of our draft policy. I guess I just want to know if you have any questions? We haven't maybe decided on, well, I guess that would be the other thing. Does anybody have issues with anything, aside from the fact that there's a lot who brought up last time? Originally, we had put 60 days of operating expenses and 15% to 17% of your annual operating expenses as a recommendation. However, as I mentioned to council, it's up to them, whatever they feel comfortable with. We can make a recommendation, but I think it's, it's very important that we have a policy in place, and if it has to be changed a year from now, or six months, or whenever, council can certainly do that, but I think we need this policy in place. So, if you have any recommendations, you want, need to make recommendations, you know. I think I've already thrown it out there as far as percentages, but we've been, actually, our fund balance is typically around 14%, or whether we can sustain that next year, I'm not sure, but I don't expect it to drop dramatically. So, a recent conference I was at, they talked about this, and recommended 12% to 15%. We could do 10%, whatever council feels comfortable, but I think we need some kind of threshold that, you know, if it starts dropping any lower than that, we need to do something so that we don't continue and run into trouble with our finances and cash flow.
Okay. We'd like to reiterate that the 15% to 17% and the 60 days of operating cash is stated as a goal.
I'm not replying to what you're saying.
Right.
Okay.
There's a lot of reasons for having, for trying to meet that goal, but yes.
Could you, what would be the dollar amount, generally based on your budget?
60 days of operating cash.
Yeah. Let's see if I can find that in some of the other information I had last week.
At the end of 2009, 1.7 million was a 15.1%. At the end of 2009, we had a 1.7 million reserve, and that, at that point in time, equaled 15.1%.
Am I understanding the terminology, a carryover, same as reserve?
Well, yes. But one thing I should, and we're only talking about the general fund, number one. Number two, carryover, what happens when you look at the unappropriated balance sheet that we prepare? That is based on estimated resources. So, the unappropriated balance at the end of the year, and what we actually end up having for carryover are not the same thing. We are talking about actual cash in the bank. So, in your fund reports, which are typically the first report you get, it's the shortest one you get, gives you the cash balances in those funds, and that's what we need, is to have that cash in the bank. It's, a similar, you know, example is when we talk about spending money up throughout the year so that you don't have money to meet your first bills, especially payroll in January. So, you have to have money sitting in the bank to pay your bills at the beginning of the year. So, at the end of each calendar slash fiscal year, you can't just spend all your money up, because you won't have been able to raise the money to start paying your bills or payroll in January. So, we need that cash balance in the bank to pay our bills for at least the first payroll, but really, it should be the first month, should be the first two months.
So, clarification, so you gave us some data last week, I believe it was, or two weeks ago, the carryover for 2010 was $835,000, and one-month expense for 2011, for instance, is $689,000, almost $700,000. So, in theory, that's one month's carryover is what we saw there.
However, I did average five months at the bottom, and the average is more like $875,000.
Okay. So, what you're looking at there is a 30-day cushion, so to speak. If we consider carryover the same as a fund balance, when you're saying there's more than a difference there, of course.
Well, when you look at the, no, the fund balance in the fund report is your carryover. The unappropriated balance on your unappropriated balance sheet is not.
Okay. President Vias had his hand up earlier.
Couple of comments. I think if I were the auditor, the treasurer, I'd want 15%, 17%. I think if... I think if I was a member of council, I would really argue for a lot more flexibility, given the uncertainty of, you know, several of the tax funds that we are gonna be getting. Now, when I started thinking about this, I did not realize that this only included the general fund. But, you know, I remember, how many years ago was it, that a former mayor was here, and on the last meeting of the year, we had to redo an income tax mix to make things work in the next year. Fortunately, most people understood what the hell was going on. But I would really think about trying to keep it as low as possible and giving this body as much flexibility as possible.
I'll try. But, you know, that was in 2004. That was my first year in office. I was the third auditor in there within a year.
Absolutely. And I'm not putting in a finger.
Well, no, I didn't take it that way at all, but I wanna point out that it hasn't been changed since.
Absolutely.
So, we have a good mix. I've recommended a little bit of change in there, but not much. Anyway, I think you're right, and that's why I've kinda left it up to council, see if they wanna come up with a number. As you said, Mary Ann, I would prefer 60 days and a little bit higher, but, you know, you tell us. One thing, I wanna go back to what I was saying, as far as not using your, the unappropriated balance. At the end of last year, the unappropriated balance was, in the general fund, was like $300,000. But in the end, not everyone spent every bit of their budget, and so we had another, which is typical, about a half a million dollars to add to that for our carryover. Okay? So, that helps with the differences in some of the forms and things that I give you.
Mary Nyslin?
I'm just wanting to make sure I understand. So, last week, you had said we averaged a monthly expense of 875,000 dollars. And so, putting that, if you doubled it and did 60 days, that would be about 1.6 million. So, that puts us at around 15 percent number. So, I mean, they are close. I hear what you're saying, President Vias, to give council members some flexibility, because there may be other expenses. But, and I guess I come back to the point, is this is a policy that it says in it, I mean, does the fact that it's setting a goal, does that give us the flexibility then to say, if need be, we might, under certain circumstances, have to drop?
Here's what I would say, and Allah, I didn't mean to jump on you, but think about when you would have to change the policy. You've been through enough of these budgetary times. It's gonna be in mid-December, or even towards the end, when you see that the numbers didn't come in like we thought they would. So, having a policy in place that you have to change at the very last minute, to me, could be very concerning. Mary Ann?
May I comment? I'd like to reiterate that it's a goal, and very clearly states that in here, and that this policy has other items in it that are important to have in writing and in place for the city. And I think that as long as it's stated as a goal, the council still has the right and the flexibility to work with the budget in the same way they always have. I don't think it restricts your abilities or your actions in any way. It is, it does represent a lot of thought and research and reflection on the business operations side of the city, in recommending that we have two months of operating cash or that range of percent. And I think it's a good benchmark or context to put some of your discussions in, so that you know when you're falling below that, you have that other perspective on it, that well, then you're gonna have less than two months. I mean, that's, that's kind of a, in the business community in general, two months of operating cash is a pretty standard minimum number to have also, so just.
Mary Gauzlin?
Yeah. Along those same lines, number two, it says utilization of minimum reserves. So, that says anytime that the balance would drop below the reserve unappropriated, then city council could approve spending some of that reserve, but it would, should only be used for one-time expenditures. I guess it doesn't say shall, but it says should, which I think is pretty strong, in terms of what we would probably wanna do as a council. And there's a shall clause after that about appropriations, not going for ongoing expenditures, unless there's a good plan to pay for those, which I think planning and having that ability is, to plan ahead is really important. But I somewhat disagree with the characterization that it's just a goal, because there are several shells in here, as to what council or the mayor's office could do with the budget at that point. And I'm not sure that they would be, it doesn't look like they're terribly strict, but I'm not sure in terms of timing, when we know something's gonna happen, how long we'll have to be able to come up with a plan that will give us a stable revenue source to pay for those ongoing expenses.
On this, Mary Ann, in the policy under B, it says bond rating agencies should recommend between 5 and 15 percent.
Depending on the size of the city and their budget. But they do like it a lot better if you're on the upper end, of course.
And I hear what you're saying about the policy and not being able to meet it. I mean, right now, what do we decide, 1.6 million dollar reserve, before I even have any operating funds for 2012? But it's my understanding that indeed auditors do look at policies that are in place, and that could indeed, could it not be a written comment against us, if we're not meeting what we've set as a goal here?
It could be a written comment if we have 5 percent, regardless of whether we have it in writing or not, frankly.
It's kind of a, you know, in a situation.
You know, I don't disagree, there could be some language changes to make this a little softer.
It could be whether we do this or not.
Did somebody over there have a?
Just to, just to let you know, our fund balance in the general fund at the end of September was over 2 million dollars. So, we don't typically, you know, the 835,000, you know, would hopefully be below this will go. Although it has gone down the last couple of years, but I think that's one of the reasons to go forward with this, is that we have something to aim for, so that we don't drop any lower than that.
Mary B?
So, we're talking about Wall Street-type people, maybe break Xandy, that's okay. And we are talking about general obligation bonds, which we don't have very many of. We're not anywhere near a ceiling, are we?
No, we're not.
Okay. So, you know, it seems to me that, I hear misgivings on the part of some of my colleagues about this, and potentially tying hands in a very difficult time. So, I'm, we're gonna start with a, I'm gonna start with kind of a jaundiced eye on this, and ask, what percentage of cities of our size have such a policy in Ohio that's written?
I have a number of samples, well, I have actually copies of written policies from a number of cities. I don't think I could tell you.
I mean, is it like?
So, we don't, there's no way that, no way that we could have canvassed all the cities.
Oh, I mean, I thought maybe if they.
I don't know that that exists. I mean, this is the kind of thing that you, we put out through our organizations and got a number of cities to respond with, sharing theirs, but it's, you know, it's maybe 10 percent of the, maybe 5 percent or 10 percent of the cities that are out there, so I don't know.
Exactly. So, you see it not really being an obstacle, except you might get an audit finding. Is that basically what I heard the last few minutes?
I think it's possible we could get an audit finding if we're too low, whether we have a policy or not, and I, you know, I could be wrong with that, but in the real world.
An audit finding, if we set a goal too low, or if we don't meet the goal, or?
If we don't have a policy, and then look at our budget and say, wow, that's not enough money.
Well, don't you think we would ruin that? We could have had to make some changes before we had got audited?
I guess it depends on what you think is too low. Half a million's still okay?
I think coming out even is always good. Having money to start with, that's all I'm striving for. But coming back to this, I guess the thing that I see from, I've seen it other times, Kathy, where we've changed the mix at the last minute. It didn't all start in 2004.
Well, I didn't say that. It might have been here, but we haven't done it since.
Your experience started in 2004, but, you know, there were other times where it happened. And what I see as a real problem for me is, all right, so you get all the things that are obligations from contracts taken care of, and so then the question is, will we give the non-union people a salary increase? The answer is, oh gee, we have to keep 15 to 17 percent in our budget. And, you know, that's, to me, is the most compelling argument to look at this more carefully, and really understand how much money we do have that's available. Because I feel like I can't, as I'm going out the door, I feel like we've been basically limiting the non-union benefits package for so long, and, you know, this is, the payoff is the general obligation bond, five, 10 years down the road, with easier times, from Wall Street. God, I'm a 99 percenter myself, most of the time, and, you know, I just don't care what those buzzards say in some sense, but I know you guys have to care, and I won't be here forever. But back again, what about the non-union? Because you know how it works. Okay, we've got contracts here, we've got this, we've got that. We don't have enough to give them a salary increase. We'll make them light their arms for another year.
Well, I think I said this before, and I mentioned it tonight. I don't recommend 15 to 17 percent. I think council should do what they feel comfortable with, if it's eight or 10 percent. Just something so that we have a policy in place, so we have an idea of what our goals are, should be. Cover one month, pick one month instead of two, and at least have that as your bottom line.
I think that it could be stated as a, as a minimum, and with another preferred goal.
And remove all the shells?
In addition to minimum.
And remove all the shells from, is this an ordinance, or is this something that sits as an appendix?
That. The policy?
Is this, is this an ordinance?
No, it's not an ordinance. The ordinance would be council adopting this as our policy.
And, okay. So, we could take out the shells? I mean, I just am really concerned about the non-union, and I, and I think you understand where I'm coming from, and I don't think.
What percent would you be comfortable with?
I would have, like to have enough money to start the year and think we're covered for the first month, whatever that means. And right now, even though I have 20-some years' experience, I'm not sure I know this year. Because if we have a, you know, like, let's just say last week, we said, oh, we have 3 percent, we're 3 percent down, potentially for next year, but we have, you know, does that include the 3 percent for salary increases in some of the bargaining units? Because if not, maybe we're 7 percent down, and that's a really serious question. And.
Seven and a half to 8 percent is kind of close to one month operating. It's gonna be in that range.
Is one month, you say?
For the 30 days. Which is what we have, traditionally, at least.
As a minimum.
As a minimum. Close to that minimum, many times since I've been here, yeah.
Right. So, there's different ways, you know, to, if we're gonna work on rewording, that would be my question, would it make sense to have a minimum, and then to also have a goal? And what would those be?
It's so hypothetical, though, just to answer your question and pass it on to Kent, because we don't know right now what our staffing situation will be. And we could potentially have retirements, and, you know, I think, we are, Bill started out and said it well for me, you know, it's easy, it's not a business, it's a, we provide services, and I think that we've done a better job than some of those Wall Street firms in meeting our goals, working things out, for crying out loud. I don't really feel too positive towards any of it.
They'd be best to bail out, couldn't they?
No, we didn't have to bail out, so in fact, we got smacked around by the state.
And it continues.
And it continues. So, I just don't know if it's the right time, but, you know, you may have, if it's low enough, and if there's, then if it's relatively less restrictive, I guess, maybe it's okay.
I just had a quick question regarding whether, if such a policy would behoove us or benefit us as a city from potential lenders or borrowing? Is it something that, maybe you alluded to that and I missed it, but I didn't know if that was something that was relevant here?
Clearly, during the bond rating process, it made a difference. What we had as a reserve, along with about 20 other things that we did really well on, and the fact that we had a draft written, made a difference.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate all the conversation about the different percentages and the concern about the money, but in theory, I support the idea of us having a standardized policy, because at the bond rating review time, I think that it does benefit us. It says we're solid, it's like, it's like an organization that doesn't have an operating set of personnel policies. I don't know if it's exactly a parallel situation, but I think it's important to us to be, you know, planning carefully, so if we can work out some of the language, so that we're really more comfortable with it in a percentage, then.
Yeah, I think that the purpose of it is to be, to offer itself as a guide.
Not so much to tie our hands.
That's what I think.
So, you mean, remove, you mean, remove all the shells and shoulds? Be happy to?
Well, should, if it's less restrictive than a dash.
Might be so.
So, you should have it, but you don't, but if you say you shall have it, then you shall have it, so.
Well, that's pretty much the sense anyway, isn't it?
Yeah. Mary, did you?
The way I hear the conversation going is that we should determine a minimum, what we want, one month, 10 percent, I'm hearing those numbers kicked around, and have a goal, a higher goal, of course, whether it's 15, or aim for two months or three months. I mean, looking at page five there, it has the formula basis of either number of months, usually one to three, of operating expenses, or recommendation of bond rating entities, five to 15. Instead of minimum, page five, I'm just reading, instead of minimum, this is the first time we're trying something like this. So, we might wanna give ourselves a little bit of room, with the idea we go revisit in a couple of years, or next year, depending on what it looks like. This is an experiment, to make ourselves more compatible. I went through the process with bond rating. They asked very astute questions, they looked at our numbers. It was a conference call over the first water there, but it was interesting. It's a lesson in how the rest of the world operates and what they look at, and this is one of the aspects they wanted to look at. So, we may as well try filling in that check mark. At the very least, give ourselves a lot of room to play with, because I, that's why here, I created discomfort, trying to box ourselves in. So, remove some of the shells, no problem. Again, this is a trial, you know?
I don't have any issues with that, and I think part of the idea and why the bond counselors, issuers want a policy, is so that we don't allow ourselves to slip into a bad situation. And I think it would be, it's certainly considered best practices for us to have a cash reserve and debt policy in place to, that we should follow, or at least try to, so that we don't just go along and ignore those bottom lines, and say, well, as long as we have money, spend it. It's really a protection for ourselves.
Yeah. It's like checking out before you go on a trip, you know?
What are you supposed to do, Pat?
Well, you know what I mean. In other words, if we don't have this policy in place, we may not be looking at it in the future. So, we may as well have something in there. It doesn't have to be so restrictive, it chokes us, but, so at least we start looking at it and say, oh, how's it looking each year, and how is it looking each, you know, at certain points.
Okay. So, can we ask?
We can continue to look at it. It's been a year now, and I just thought it was time to bring it up, and there's no mad rush, as Nancy said, maybe you want to wait until January and see how the end of this year goes.
Could we ask Patrick to take a look at it too, or somebody who's, you know, another set of eyes? Does anything in there?
Sure. I'll make sure he's got that up. I think he did when we first talked about it, but, and I'll find, see what I can find out from the sample policies. We've got how many of them are comparable to our size, and what kind of policies they had. It's been a while since we've looked at that information.
I think I still have it.
Oh, I know I do. So, you know, just something else I wanna throw out there, that this is a policy, and we typically, city administration puts forth a lot of policies and procedures, I do a lot of them in my office. However, it has also been brought up at conferences that I go to, that council should be involved when the policy affects their actions. Okay? And so, I thought it was proper not to just say, we like this policy, but I thought council should look at it. Another example that I'll be asking you to look at would be our vehicle disposal, which is something that Paula, Ron Lucas, and I have worked on, you know, a year ago or more, that actually council is responsible for part of that process, and should also approve that policy. So, just to give you an idea of why we're doing this, and why, you don't really wanna have. wanna have to pass an ordinance for every policy we have in our offices in the city, but some of them absolutely do involve you, and so you should see the policy and you should approve it also.
Well, I think that's what the consensus here is, that we do hear what you're saying, that this policy is important, but I hope you also hear that we're kind of uncomfortable with setting, setting it down and then not, not making that go or whatever. So, this is a check, first time around, so if we drag our feet for a while, that, if we drag our feet for a while, it doesn't necessarily hurt. I hope, that's, you said we could even go to January and start it in two thousand-
I, I just want council to be comfortable, that's why I said you could pick a percentage. We can continue through the end of the year to provide you more figures about what the end of the year available monies are gonna be for the city. You know, three-quarters of the way through is good, however, closer to the end of the year, things can change. You know, I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Number eight.
One last thing, I just wanna make sure that you have a, give us a clear understanding, because what I heard early was, it really doesn't matter, because if you pass an ordinance, it won't be a problem, a new ordinance that would countermand what we have in the policy. But on the other hand, I heard you say just a minute ago, we would be, we would be affected, councils of the future would be affected by this action, by this policy. And I, to me, that seems like a bit of a conflict, so I guess for a resolution, you might, you know, how, what are we, how are we curtailing our power, I guess is the question, or your, future council's power is, is the question. I don't, I can see hypothetically why it would happen, but, you know, let's go back to subdivision regulations, my, an example would be, we say we have to have a supermajority to do certain things, we know that in advance, but I, I'm not a hundred percent sure how this one works. You understand what I'm saying? We say in advance, in order to do thus and so, we have to have a supermajority vote on council, it's pretty clear, it's pretty established, this is a little bit new. So it either is a big pro, no problem at all, you can take care of whatever problems come up, or it, we will have our actions affect it, and I guess I wanna know how those two sort out.
I don't, I think it's, I don't think that we said it didn't matter. I think what we were trying to say was that its importance was as a goal and as a guide, and that we think it makes sense to have a tool for, you know, as part of the ongoing evaluation of the budgets and how that happens, and I, and I understand, you know, the reservations and think, and everyone thinks that the language and the numbers are maybe a little stronger than you'd like them to be, and that's fine. I, I think that, I guess I don't see in it a way that is, is as restrictive as I think people saw it initially, I think that's where that conversation was centered around. And, and the point of bringing it up for discussion is, for that very question you've just asked at the end, well, how does anyone on council think that it will be restrictive in the future, and if it is, then we need to adjust for that, we need to take care of that.
But wouldn't you normally address that to the people that frame the policy, rather than, I mean, because as I read it, you know, I was reading it and trying to figure out what it meant, I mean, it's not my natural reading material, but-
Well, I didn't, I didn't think it did, but I'll have to go back through it again.
Okay, well, if it doesn't affect-
Add, add in heard concerns, and we'll look at it again, and, and maybe there'll be some more specific questions we can ask.
Okay. Thank you for indulging me.
One last question, it sounds like the debt side of this is not an issue. Am I reading that correctly?
Right.
Just so we're, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page of that.
No, we're near our debt limit, voted on debt, such as the community center and East State, our levies are not included in our percentage of debt. So, we've handled our debt side that well. But, yeah.
So, you'll come back to us? Thank you. Simple life in your tax, or bothering you?
Well, I was just gonna requote on our last meeting about this, Mary Ann and I went with the tax account administrator, Tina Timberman, and we went on Friday, and there's just a lot of things going on there. One of the things I got from the three, two state representatives and one state senator were that they had no proposal in front of them, that most of the talk was being kept at the administrative level, but I think we made our position clear that we are definitely against it. There's a lot of reasons why we wouldn't be for, be for that, and so we're following up on that, it's a good thing that council passed a resolution, I do appreciate that, because that's something they talk about and they use. And right now, the other side of that is the meeting, the week before that Tina and Ray went to had to do with the different entities trying to standardize some of our regulations for taxes to make it easier, because that's one of the big things, they wanna make it easier on business, and so we possibly stand to lose some revenue by doing that, but I don't think anything major, and I think if we can continue to control our own tax collection, then it would be worth, you know, worth that. So, that's where we are, Mary Ann might wanna add some more about our meeting.
I'd seen that the focus on why it might come up in approximately six months, the last speaker noted, was, because, it seemed like there's a lot of focus on making every government entity more efficient. One of the, one of the best questions that I thought was made is, did they think that IRS could do a good job of collecting state taxes, and, and the point was well made.
You must have loved that.
Wasn't me. I thought it was well said, but it, but it does seem like they're dancing around it. They're not saying that there's a proposal, but, but there's talk and there's some response to a point in a white paper written by CPA organizations, so this organization that sponsored the meeting we went to is also, has drafted and is almost finished with another response to that from the group, so we'll see where it goes.
Thank you both for staying with us, staying on this, I know. Okay, now we're gonna hear, I believe, from Service H R Director.
I think Nancy Bane has the information.
Yes, we're asking to transfer, Andy asked to transfer thirty-five thousand from TC one hundred to TC three hundred, this was our maintenance fund. He hopes before the year ends, since he's finally gotten some okays from the people affected to replace a storm sewer line on Columbus Road. It says, you've seen the pipe sitting out there for two years, and the property owners are going to allow the excavation. And so now I have to ask, is this down on the area across from, I better not say that in public, let's see, is it the place that the, the place where somebody sewed it across the street, is that where he's gonna put this oil?
It's down there on Columbus Road, you've seen the pipe, and-
Okay, I said Columbus Road, but I didn't say where. Okay. And is it gonna cost us anything? We have an easement in the deed for this?
Yes, that's why he's asking for the transfer, in terms of being able to fund that, we've already purchased the pipe, but it's a new label equipment cost. And I guess I would also like to alert council because we can, weren't able to meet offline in financing for personnel committee, there may be additional transfer requests that'll happen within, prior to the next meeting on Monday, try to communicate electronically.
For Halloween, there was a transfer request?
Well, if, part of the issue is because Halloween is this week, and we've had a lot of planning up to and what have you, that it's one more item for the department heads to look at, and then all of a sudden say, oh, I still need my own money here, or need to move some money. I'm just saying there may be additional transfer requests coming through.
Depends how bad it is, doesn't it?
I was just talking to-
I know, I'm teasing.
I'm hoping for a clean and safe Halloween.
Yes, it's been, so far, so good. Could you, again, state for me that Andy is going to have the easement for said storm line, put in the deed of the person owning the property?
Yes, I'd be tempted.
Okay. Wait a minute. No attempt, I mean, I, we have some other things down there that are very sketchy, so that's why I was hoping we could, okay.
The previous repair was allowed by property owner permission.
True.
And, no, we don't have anything in the deed.
But that was then, and this is now, and I have great confidence in you, Paula, get on it.
Good stuff, Melissa.
There you go. Did you hear what I mean?
Anything else?
Yeah, but see, what happens is, if they build a building on top of it, you know, what happens then?
It's happened before.
It's happened before, yes.
Happened several times.
So, so what was, what you're saying, what we'll say is, there will be a transfer ordinance of the seventh of November that will include these items, and additional items as well.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what I was saying, because there will be two weeks, correct, for council needs, we might identify other needs.
Okay, I'm done.
Yeah, I'm aware of, again, we're working on a two thousand twelve budget right now, and I know we've got some reports from some of our departments, and I think Chief File Ben's, that he may be short fuel funds for this year, he's looking at it right now. You know, it's a guesstimate, depending on how much time to run around on Halloween.
I remember one year we had thirty thousand short inch one hundreds in streets, so not too long, but, but some of those looks back.
And as I'm getting most, especially jump to the next topic, they're working on a budget, getting staff, to put their staff oiled, it's a little bit hard because everybody is kind of focused on the next weekend, but they're working on it as best they can.
I've received already from both the police and the fire chief regarding, and basic on this, well, he calls it a wish list, but capital improvements they want, and then also looking at their operating expenses for two thousand twelve, so we're still waiting on that from a few other divisions, but we are gathering that information.
And Ray has generated, thanks to Ray, he's generated TC one hundred numbers, and just working on a lay through those phone lines and make sure they all match up, make sure they're checking with the steps, but as well as make sure everybody's included, if they leave somebody out, they would like to be let down.
Did you see that, Jim?
Excuse me?
Have you seen that?
No. How did I hear?
Appropriations, this email went out from Ray, and I think most of you were included on this, at least the finance committee. We had discussed this, the fact that we have paid down the EPA litigation note to the point where we can now pay it off, but we need the appropriation in there, we weren't planning to pay on that until next year, so we need sixty thousand dollars appropriated in seven forty-eight TC four hundred.
And that one, how did the transfer?
What was that?
Seven forty-
Seven forty-eight TC four hundred.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand. Which is what we owe, but there is a, a small amount of money in there, enough that we think to cover the interest. We were all excited, thinking we were gonna write a check last week and then realized we hadn't appropriated it, so. Get this done by the end of the year, I think would be great.
And then the hundred contracts, I've received, and I think it's back on the table, maybe did you tell me, that Athens Community Access, we need to get a little more eyes on this in terms of funding, but the contracts that are coming up for renewal, we're all working on the auditor's office as being as aware of, so.
And I think council members got open copies of that, so we're aware of that also, that we know that these are coming up, and, and the auditor and I talked, and-
Just this afternoon, and I just gave Jim some information, I included the access TV information, and then the visiting, Convention of Visitors Bureau and the EDC, we will have to make some kind of change or decision, council will, about how to handle the tourism money, which is basically the TGT money.
So, I think we'll probably talk about contract costs at our next committee meeting, because literally just two minutes ago, the auditor was going to give me some, some of this information, so. Again, I think you have in your hand what contracts are up for renewal.
Yeah, so if you have that list, just one thing I wanna point out, that we didn't mark there, the Athens Area Mediation Service is a court contract.
I'm sorry.
If you have the list that I sent out to everyone with the contracts, the first one on there, the Athens Area Mediation Service is a court contract, that they will handle, it's grant money. Some of these you don't have to deal with specifically. J L Yurigan Associates is through the auditor's office, those are our accountants who do our conversion for our auditors. And the other court and community center contracts are listed over to the right. And I believe that's been renewed, I'll get that clarified and document it to the auditor's office. Athens Hawking Solid Waste District was for our household hazardous waste, so that essentially will die until the scheduled next scheduled household hazardous waste. And I guess, just to, can I briefly go over this tourism money, just so everybody can have it in their mind, and then we'll talk about it more? Is, if you recall, two years ago, we started splitting that money, instead of putting all the TGT money, which is the transient guest tax money, into the tourism fund, which we have been doing for years, and paying the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau thirty-five percent, which is our contract with them, and the Economic Development Council, thirty-five percent with a cap of fifty-five thousand, all of that out of the tourism fund. Then two years ago, we split the revenue into that fund, fifty percent into the general fund. At the time, we reserved about sixty-three thousand dollars as carryover to pick up the slack, because thirty-five and thirty-five is seventy percent of the money. And although the EDC doesn't get the full thirty-five percent, it still amounts to more than fifty percent of our total revenue. So, at the end of this year, this is our second year, we will be down to about seventeen thousand dollars extra left in there, which will not be enough for us to add to our payments next year. For example, so far this year, we, well, like in two thousand ten, we took in a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, but we paid out a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And so we used that extra carryover to make those payments, but we don't have that for next year, because we are putting the amount we are in the general fund. One suggestion would be to go ahead and pay the EDC out of the general fund, then that would leave some money in the tourism fund to use for other projects or events. But that's just some things I'm throwing out there, so you guys can make that decision and whether you wanna keep your contracts the way they are, and the fifty-five thousand dollar cap for EDC, things like that. That's a council mayor discussion, but I just wanna throw that out. Anybody have any questions about that?
Questions about what the auditor just talked about? We'll talk more fully in a couple of weeks.
According to the, the way it's written, Ohio Vice Code for Lodging Tax, which is the tourism money, there's nothing says you can't pull it out of the general fund and put it back into tourism if need be. Again, taking it all out of the general, we're probably so focused quite a bit. I would like maintaining our contract with the EDC, because again, this is our main mechanism for looking at increasing economic development in our area, unless we wanna become experts Performance wise, it depends on what, what goes on year to year, you've been around long enough to know that some years, nothing happens. I think we've been doing pretty well. Todd Shelton and Economic Development Council have been doing pretty well considering the economic climate. I also, gets us engaged with the university and county, we're all working together on this in terms of economic development, and we have better communication, some for good, some for bad. Considering something like GoVACU and moving out of the city, but moving, staying in the county, to me is, is not, I would like them to stay in the city, but at the same time, all in all, it's, it's the fact that they stayed here. We do have, and this is what you're looking at as a growing company, that's, that's been growing, and obviously, which is remarkable considering everything that's been going on since two thousand eight. Sun Power the same way, it helps us put all our resources in one coherent communication of group through the EDC. The bylaws are written such that you, we are committed to at least fifty thousand, if not fifty-five. I'd rather than not reduce it, just to give them the working ability, it's really- It's really, it's, I think it's worth a lot to do. So how do we finance this? Do we move money out of the general fund? We could, we change the mix, put a cap on, which I'd love to do as well for tourism, because I think they're doing quite well. They're very, being inventive on what they have. We might want to look at the scope of services, see if we want to get more of them or something different. But that's pretty much, you know, what you...
So they have a total operating budget of about 170K. Does Todd Shelton have that, and we're paying about a third of it?
What are you asking about?
I want to know what part the city's paying, what part the university's paying, and what part the county's paying.
The county is paying 30 this year, where they should have been paying 20. It's 50. So they've actually shorted the EDC this year. The university's paying 50. They came in, it was, it was unknown whether they do it this year, actually. We're paying 50, I think 50 or 54, we're paying 55, I think the university's paying 55. That puts you on executive board. Nelsonville's paying, I think about 15. Hocking College is, I'm trying to remember all the players here, I think. I'm not sure if the chamber is not. The Economic Development Council has gotten money from various sources, CIC, as well as a court authority, I believe. So we've got a lot of people buying into the, the system here.
But we're the biggest contributor?
We're one of the biggest. O U and S. And as, um, there is, there is a, there is a discussion going on right now within the EDC about what happens when somebody doesn't pay their full share.
One thing I want to add is, um, that, um, the revenue we bring in is more than what we pay out. So whether we take it out of the general fund or the tourism fund, we are not paying out more than what we bring in. Even if we were to take that out of the general fund, so far this year, we brought in 114,000. So half of that would be, you know, 57,000 right there that went into the general fund already. And...
Which is how we balanced the budget last time, didn't we? I mean, that's how we didn't have to go into more dire circumstances, right?
No.
Kind of pays for Halloween. Yeah, I pay, well, I mean, we used to have it out there by itself, and then we put it in the general fund, and we spent it out of the general fund. I mean, we don't have a huge amount left there, or maybe we do.
Right. Well, I mean, that's the thing, those are your options. You can put more into the general fund, you can put more into the tourism fund and pay them, continue to pay them out of the tourism fund.
So we've got 50...
It just depends on where you want your extra money, whether you want it in the tourism fund or the general fund.
The extra money is used for?
It's up to you guys.
Like fun, it's up to us. We don't spend money.
Uh-huh, that's about all we do.
We don't spend money on a daily basis. But are you talking about Halloween porta potties, or are you talking to something else? I mean, we spent, we put 50 for, it was 50/50 before, 50 went into the general fund for general fund purposes. What went after that, I have no tail on it. The other 50% went to pay for Todd Shelton and, and the tourism. That's my understanding, isn't it? That's basically it.
Yeah, a little bit more...
I mean, you can buy porta potties out of any line in the general fund practically, can't you?
Yeah, but there are other things coming out of the tourism, besides that, I believe. Let me check here.
Well, if people took it out of there, that's, I mean, our intention was pretty clear two years ago, what we want, was part of the stopgap against bigger losses.
Well, the fact is, if you don't change something, we won't be able to meet our contractual agreements.
Or we could change the contract.
As far as our payments, yeah.
Well, we could change the contract.
Yes, you absolutely could. That's why I'm putting that out there.
Yeah. So, in fact, as the auditor said, we, we, we have to change some mix, something with those...
Not the income tax, Mr....
No, but the, the tourism fund and the way that that is, is divided into three parts, so, um, again, I really didn't intend to have this wider discussion tonight, but in two weeks. So Mayor, did you have something to add?
No, no.
Okay.
Oh, you mean in terms of budget or contract extension?
It'd be great to have.
Contract extension.
It would be good to have some paper.
Okay. I do want to mention that we're probably in negotiation with McDonald's, extend the Athens Transit contract possibly for at least three months, maybe a year. Essentially, we have an RFP that's been generated, that we're, we're going to actually contract with half cap to do the administration of the grant, and we want to give them time to sit in there and look at our proposals, the proposals we've been doing in the past, and see if we can approve on it. McDonald's seems to be amenable to actually maintaining the, uh, the present contract for at least three months, if not more. This is a conversation that occurred Thursday, I think it was, Thursday or Friday, with Charlene involved in it. And again, the idea there is that we want to get better performance out of the next contract, and if we're going to have somebody administering the grant, they may as well have some say in what kind of performance we want to put in there. So it will require probably a redrawing of our, um, RFP or somewhere along the line. But meantime, I want to let you know the extension, we'd like to do an extension of that. If you look at your list, that's one of the things that's come to do.
Okay.
And that's what I really wanted to add, just to make, I, actually, the, the first agenda I had, had Transportation Committee, and I thought it'd be appropriate to bring it up there, but since it disappeared.
Keep up, keep up.
Okay.
Okay. And so, auditor, we done right now? Anybody else have any questions or concerns about this, the contracts that are coming due? Or again, we'll cover that more completely when we have more information in a couple of weeks. The mayor brought up 2012 budget, and I think we've talked about it with the auditor and the treasurer. The mayor has commented on that, contract renewals. Anything else that we need to talk about, financing personnel?
You want to quick miscellaneous, I guess?
Okay.
Just wanted to remind council members that this, we're coming up on the end of a term of council, so no ordinances can span into next year. If, you know, the other years, you're able to carry an ordinance over, but since, uh, members of council will be changing, anything that you want adopted has to be adopted by the end of the year, and we're coming up on about eight weeks before the end of the year after, next month, so, or after next meeting.
Okay. I have nothing else for financing personnel?
We're out of here.